One at seven o'clock. Our recording has begun. I see that the five members of the commission are present, so I'll call the meeting to order. First thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda for tonight. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Agenda is approved. Third thing is approval of the minutes for the January twenty-sixth Planning and Zoning Meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. We have a couple of members of the public online. I think we have, what, ten total, counting, tonight? Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment, limited to two minutes? Okay, hearing none. Move on to the item number five on the agenda, which is the chairman's motion to modify the commission meeting schedule for this year, canceling the meetings on November twenty-third and December twenty-eighth, and adding meetings on November ninth and December seventh. Do I have a motion to approve? Or?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Okay, tonight, the main subject is text amendments and the zoning map that accompanies the comprehensive plan. I've attended the town council meetings this month, both the work session and the meeting this month, and I want to pass on to you that all the town councilmen, all the members of the town council have complimented you on the work that's been done and are very impressed with the product that's been produced. That's not to say they're going to approve it as written, but they did want to express their thanks and appreciation for the work that you've done. With that, as they went around briefly discussing the comprehensive plan, one of, one member of the council pointed out that they, they would like to see both the comprehensive plan and all the zoning changes that relate to it as one package before there, that individual plans to support the comprehensive plan. Another one mentioned that they wanted to see all the, all the decisions that were not unanimous amongst the commission. And a third member of the council said that they had looked through the comprehensive plan and they could not find anywhere details on the thirty-five-foot height limit. I referred them to the, the resolution we passed, I believe it was in September. But that is the first thing on the agenda, and I should say that the agenda, item six on the agenda is based on the comprehensive plan, those items that were listed in the last chapter as changes necessary to implement the plan in the immediate term. So it's basically a cut-and-paste list from, from the comprehensive plan, and I thought that would be a, one way of working our way through what's necessary to provide the town council with the changes that we propose. As I, as I've thought about it, it seems to me it would be helpful to the town council if with each of the changes that we propose, we could refer back to the page in the comprehensive plan where that change has been recommended. I went through the, the plan and counted up somewhere over sixty recommendations that are made in the plan. About half of them are listed in the last chapter as near-term or immediate-term actions. So, anyway, that's what I would like to do, is to put a page number, so the town council members, when they look at the changes we propose, they can flip to the page and the, what is it, hundred-and-twenty-page comprehensive plan and, and see where we've recommended that. So, let's, um, let me begin with the, I think it's the first one on the list in the comprehensive plan, reducing the allowable maximum building height to thirty-five feet. We already have, before the town council, or at least we passed it to the town council last September, and they deferred it indefinitely, waiting to see the, the entire comprehensive plan. But as I, as I looked at it, and really in response to the one town councilman that said, you know, where's it explained? The thirty-five-foot height limit, because he couldn't find that in our comprehensive plan. And I looked at the resolution that we sent, and it really doesn't explain that either. And, and then I thought about what we added, one of the last things we added to the comprehensive plan, which is on page one-twenty-seven, but it says, "During comprehensive rezoning and update of the town zoning map, each change should be accompanied by a statement of its consistency with the objectives of this comprehensive plan." So that's kind of a basis of what I, why I think we should attach a reference to the comprehensive plan, so that town council members can, can track it. And as I, so going to the thirty-five-foot height limit, we never, to my, as far as I can tell, in writing, explained the changes that we wanted. I know one, another town council member asked, "Why thirty-five feet, not thirty or forty?" Another one asked, "Where's it measured from? Where's it measured to?" Why, why is it changed that the height in the, that's a note that is provided under the table, says, "The height on the flood plain may not be exceeded to meet the flood protection elevation." And why, why is the exception for off-street parking deleted? Now, I, I would think we should address those in the memo that we send to the town council, but I'm open to suggestions from the commission. So anybody have comments on that?
I have a comment.
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
This is Kathleen. I, I, I think it, it would be very good to add the page number as well as to explain our changes and why, and what was our objective, because I think it is due to the, the size of the document. I think it's easy to get, you know, to spend a lot of time looking for the change and why we set it and how it relates to reference it with the comprehensive plan. So I think it's, it's a good idea, and I think it will simplify when the town council actually needs to, to look at our recommendations. They'll have a, an easier reference, and they'll be able to focus not so much on finding it and, and getting some, some information related to that recommendation, but easier. And I, I think it would be very helpful, and I certainly understand why they would want it. I mean, the document's large. So I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Blackwelder, you have any comments?
I do. So for the memo, it does not mention removing the bonus density zone in its entirety, which is what we discussed. And the purpose of reducing the, to the thirty-five feet was, A, small-town charm, and B, particularly in the maritime district, to reduce density. And we did decide to remove that overlay in its entirety. And so, for one, the memo should say that, because if we're not going to remove the entire bonus density overlay district, then we need to talk about what we're leaving, because there's some very particular things in there that address density.
Yeah, then the, and the comprehensive plan and, which is in the list that is in our agenda, that says, "Remove all references to the bonus density overlay district in their entirety." That's clearly one of the proposals in the comprehensive plan. And, and like you say, that was a second paragraph, I think, in, in the proposal. And again, we, it kind of begs explanation. Commissioner Greengold?
Um, okay, I, you know, we've been discussing this thirty-five-foot height limit for so long. Again, do you want my comments as to why we should have the thirty-five-foot height limit? Is that what the question is? Did you want me to go through my reasons why? I mean, they're pretty much what Lori's reasons were. First of all, I go on what I have seen throughout the coastal areas on both, both west coast, east coast, that the thirty-five-foot height limit seems to be the maximum height, and sometimes they're down to twenty, sometimes they're down to twenty-five feet, on anything along coastal areas, and that includes commercial buildings, recreational buildings. And that is to give a feeling that more people that are not necessarily along the coast have better breezes and better views and better access to the coastal area. You know, the biggest complaint that Chesapeake Beach has had in the last five years, actually less than that, even three years, is that we're taking away all, you know, certain businesses are taking away all the beach properties. That here we are, a beach town, and we have no beach access or no beach, no appearance of any beaches anywhere. So, you know, if anything else, we need to maintain, number one, our small-town feel. Number two, we need to give people, you know, not necessarily right next to the beach, more access to the bay views and the bay breezes. And number three, it also just, the lower profile just gives a more aesthetically peaceful and calming appearance, so it's aesthetically pleasing. So there are so many reasons, I could just go in through and list them, if that's what we all need. I just felt that, you know, if we had a recommendation, that the reasons should have been something that the town council can roll over, but, you know, if you want us to write them down, is that what you're asking for? Chairman Brown is for us to write these down and come up with all the different reasons why? Or I'm still a little confused about what we're asking for here.
Okay, I'm, I am not arguing or suggesting that we change any recommendation in the comprehensive plan. That's in print. The ink is dry. It's, that's over, as far as I'm concerned. What I'm suggesting is that we need to provide, we need to sell it. The, it, it doesn't, according to one town council member who asked the question, I don't see any explanation of the thirty-five-foot limit. Why, why is that? And if you recall during our, our hearing, we had a question, a written question saying, "Why thirty-five? Why not thirty? Why not forty-five?" You know, and so I'm just, I'm just saying, we, we need to explain, and as, as we added to the comprehensive plan, that phrase, "Each zoning change should be accompanied by a statement of consistency with the comprehensive plan." That's, that's all I'm saying, is, is sales, not changes. I'm not proposing any, any changes here.
Okay, can we have somebody transcribe, or should, do you want me to come up with all these reasons?
Well, if you want to, if, if, I know you're, you're kind of the expert on this. If you would like, I would ask that Chris rewrite, redraft that memo and, and take the, the ideas that have been suggested here, and if you want to send some ideas to Chris, that would be helpful, but to help put together why, why this is important, because from my point of view, this is one of the central recommendations in the plan, and it just needs to be explained, the justification, so that the town council can do what they will with it.
Okay. I'm sorry, does anybody else, can I hear from other people as to why they also agree with the thirty-five feet? You've heard some of my ideas. I will write them down and give them to Chris.
Okay, we, we have, we have one more council member, Commissioner Ruckey, who, if you want to weigh in?
Yes, I do. First of all, the easier we can make it for town council to find what the text message, the text amendments apply to, the more likely they are to go along with them. And I was in real estate sales my whole life, and I know the thirty-five feet is the one single thing that people are like eyeballing, and we do need to sell it. We need to use the word "small-town charm," because, you know, everybody throws that out, whether it's town council or people that are for or against anything. I think Cindy is eloquent on the topic, and I think it's an excellent idea.
Okay, so, Chris, can you, excuse me, Commissioner Blackwelder?
Thank you, Chairman Brown. A couple of things. First, the Maryland Department of Planning's memo did address the, the intensity in the flood areas, which would be the maritime zone. And they did recommend against high-intensity development. They specifically recommended against horizons on the bay and intensity like that. So the thirty-five-foot limit does address that.
That's a great idea.
Yes, Cindy did a huge service to this commission by finding code while, when we were go, you know, we were kind of running around in circles with all this density and height stuff, and she found a model town with a model code, and she suggested their code, and their code works very well for them. And there's another piece of their code that I would like to, to bring up later on in our meeting. But it's a good, solid code. It clearly was, you know, vetted by their community, and their community has developed in the way that we continue to say that we want to develop. And residents have continued to backlash against what we've seen that has been very high and very intense. Additionally, I know in my neighborhood, most of us are commuters, and we do not want to be stuck behind more traffic. We have limited roads. We, we, our town ends at a T-intersection, which is very much unlike a town that has three-hundred-and-sixty degrees of outlet. We have half that. So we need to address intensity. Cindy came up with a model town with a model code that is vetted and repeated throughout coastal towns, and it is a very good, solid code, and she did this board a huge service by offering up. And just to address the, the questions about the parking underneath, I can, well, it, it would be my opinion, but my opinion would be based on feedback from many, many people. No one's interested in a parking garage town. No one, if, if they hear that being argued by the town council, they will vote against the people that argue for it, I'm sure of it. Nobody wants that. There is tons of, of people that do not see that as small-town charm. They do not understand why we continue to over-intensify properties by allowing them to have the capacity to fit more people and more activity on them. So Cindy's code that she presented is all-encompassing and addresses all, you know, all the problems that we want to address: density, height, charm, breezes, flood zone. It's, it's good, solid code. It's been vetted in a community that many of us admire, and it really should be supported.
Chairman Brown, if you would indulge me, I will, with Chris, come up with some of these ideas, and if I, if you would like me to send them around to the commissioners and get their feedback as well, we can get this done, maybe have it back for the next meeting. Would that be something that you'd like to see?
I'd suggest, if you have ideas, if you would submit them to Chris, and Chris will consolidate them and will, and it'll go out with the agenda for the next meeting, and we can discuss the final product at the next meeting. I, I just wanted to clarify one thing, though. Commissioner Blackwelder kept referring to this code, which apparently is not the one that we proposed. Are you proposing a change now to the code that we proposed previously?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
She was referring to St. Michael's, the city of, the town of St. Michael's, in the east bay, on the east, eastern shore, Chairman Brown.
Okay, well, yeah. In, in one section of St. Michael's code, it talks about a thirty-eight-foot height limit. Anyway, whatever, we're we, so we are not changing the recommend, recommended code that we sent to the town council. We're only providing a justification for it. Is that?
Right, exactly.
That's correct.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, there's, Chris, do you have any comments, questions?
You must be on mute.
Mr. Chairman, no, no real comments, except to say that while the discussion was going, I was locating a number of specific objectives in the plan that would support the planning commission's thirty-five-foot height limit. So I think this won't be a very difficult thing to write, and it's a good, smart thing to do. I like it.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, so if you'll submit any ideas you have on this and any other subject we have tonight, are, one of the things that was mentioned at the town council meeting is they, they have a lot on their plate right now. They have a lot of things going on. This, of course, is important, but they have other things, too. They're, they're going to try and move this along fairly quickly. They're going to set a hearing date on it soon. And so, so it would behoove us to get our text amendments and zoning map change completed, but it's not so urgent that it has to be done next month. I think we have at least, at least two more meetings to, to pull all that together, but I think we should shoot for trying to have this, these done by, what is it, March, April, by, at the April meeting, complete our work on the text amendments and the, any map changes. Any thoughts on that? That sound doable?
That does.
Okay, all right, so, moving down the list, "Remove all references to the bonus dis, dense." Chris, would it be better to just turn this over to you and go through the changes that you, you already have documented down, so we can, I'll look at those directly?
Yes, yeah, and I'll follow the list, we, we actually prepared back in August, and, and it's, and, and, you know, following the list that you've got in the, the, the agenda there. In the process of sharing my screen here. So the next one is bonus density overlay. This page is in that bundle of zoning text amendments, has two amendments. The first one is to completely repeal section two-ninety-fifteen, which is the bonus density overlay in its entirety, and then renumber the remaining sections accordingly. And amendment two is remove all references to the bonus overlay district wherever they may happen to appear in the zoning ordinance.
Chris, man, or Jill?
Of course.
Just with a suggestion, rather than renumber the remaining sections, I've seen in, in different codes, they just mark it "reserve" with the parentheses. And I think that would save time and offer a space for any kind of opportunity type of floating district that we might want to add.
Right, okay, fine, that's, that's a good idea, and ultimately, it's the town attorney will make the judgment about this. So why, why should we be telling him to renumber the sections? Either way, we'll let him make that judgment, but I think that's a smart move, leave that opening in the, in the code. Very good. So I, those are the, Mr. Chairman, of course, the zoning map itself lifts all reference to the bonus overlay district as well, so the changes are now proposed that would address that comment in the agenda.
Okay.
The next item in the agenda is
"Dividing the residential village district into two zoning districts."
Okay. "And create a purpose statement for each. Within the new RV-one district, remove multifamily housing and townhouses from the list of permitted uses, but continue to allow these uses within the new RV-two." So let's switch to the map first. And the commissioners, remember this document that we sent out a couple of weeks ago? It's a PowerPoint presentation. I guess I don't want to get into the weeds on this, because we're going to deal specifically with the list as, as items come, but this could be a useful exercise. Remember, the RV district is, on the left-hand side of this exhibit is the existing zoning map, and on the right-hand side, it's the zoning map as proposed to be changed, with the goal of making it consistent with the land use plan in the new plan. So the RV is, is, you know, is shown here with the RV symbols all over. It's fairly substantial. It comes all the way up between Chesapeake Beach Road and Cox Road, drops down on the south side of Cox Road a bit, and extends all the way up to David and D Street, which is just south of First. So if we So if we then turn to the other side of this exhibit, we see those changes being made. RV one, the, the commercial zone up there becomes RV V one. Residential medium district becomes RV one. And then that small pocket there of, of land that's not developed yet would be RV two. That came out of recent discussions that the commission had. But the big change is this, well, the big change is that this part of RV along 26th Street, south of Maryland 260 becomes RV one rather than RV two. What was RV becomes RV two. So this is all the RV two. And this high density zone that exists today becomes RV one too, as well. So the new let's see here. Got so many documents open for this meeting, so I can explain these changes. Oh. Well, anyway, the, I guess the, the new zoning map that we sent out is here. Okay. This map shows the new arrangement of RV and RV two. So if there's any questions on the boundaries of these lines, let me know. I attempted to faithfully represent what was shown on the land use plan. And the land use plan is pretty specific with respect to where these lines are drawn. So that was kind of just a mapping exercise. So anyway, that's
Yeah, that appears to address the next question too, dividing the commercial zoning districts into multiple districts. That is also shown on the, the revised map. So.
Can I make a suggestion?
Commissioner Blackwelder.
So this map does mirror what we put in the comprehensive plan. And the town council is going to have a public hearing and they're going to hear citizens. And so I don't, I don't think we should spend a lot of time talking about this map again. It's exactly like we recommended it. So I don't think we need to go back and talk about everything again right now before there is a public hearing. I think we can just see that Chris has a good plan that we can get it done very quickly after that public hearing and after the town council weighs in and leave it for after that, and it should go very quickly. And we're going to waste a lot of time talking about all this. And there's no point in passing in the map before the town council has their hearing and has their say.
Okay, yes, we, we will be forwarding the change in the map to the town council along with text changes. And so as Chris said, if you have, if you want to look over this map, make sure it incorporates all the things that you believe were decided during the comprehensive plan discussions. And if you have any, uh, any suggestions on getting the two aligned, get those directly to Chris. And otherwise we will dispense with any future discussion of the map. Pretty simple. Okay. All right.
I do have a question about the map though, eventually, but I don't have it right now.
Okay. Uh, all right. So on, on my list or the agenda list, it says, modernize the list of permitted uses by district as may be needed to reflect changing land uses, building types and business activities and expressly prohibits uses that are found to be inherently adverse and incompatible with the public health and welfare of the town. So I suspect that gets into text changes, Chris. So over to you.
Okay. And so right before we get into those text changes, I do think we need to pick up on the text changes that are embedded in the zoning map.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So let's kind of just do that. Bear with me as I zoom down to changes. Okay, so because we're creating a new district, we need to establish the purpose statement, establish the district and, and as per convention, add a purpose statement to it. These statements are pretty important. I was just reminded of that just literally last week when I had to make a zoning interpretation and had to refer to, because things could not be decided in clear terms, had to ultimately refer to the purpose of the district in making a determination. So reminding me of the same discussions we're having now on these districts. So the first one is RV one. And there, there's the district description. We provided it to the commissioners. Are there any questions about that particular statement? And while we're at it, maybe RV two's revisions, RV two is simply the old RV with a two name. Any questions or comments, members?
Chairman Brown, Cindy, I'd like to make a comment about RV one, the description of RV one.
Commissioner Green Gold.
I find that RV one's description is very vague and it has too many, you might call holes or, you know, it, it allows a lot of leeway in that description. And I think if we're going to do RV one correctly, we should make it more specific and a little bit more precise according to what we thought RV one was. So when it says RV one district is intended to provide for pleasant and safe residential neighborhoods. First of all, I don't like the word pleasant because I think that word just is elusive and it doesn't really mean anything. So I think that should be taken out. I think safe, there is some idea of what safety means. But I think what I would like to see in this, and I also want to say, get rid of the word primarily, to allow primarily single family detached houses. When you use primarily, that means that Chris, again, doesn't, he has a, like a lot of leeway there and he doesn't really know what does primarily mean? Does it mean that we can have townhomes and what does that primarily mean? So I think taking primarily out is an important idea. And I also say, when you say detached houses on the smaller lots, what, what is a small lot? So again, confusion. So I think we need to take the smaller lots idea out of it. Um, so when we, in my opinion, it needs to be rewritten to be a little more precise. Chris, do you not see that it has a little bit of vagueness to it?
Yeah, and it could be fine tuned without a doubt.
So again, I think we should keep in the safe residential neighborhood. I think we need to put in small town feel. I think that especially in the residential village district one, that is really an important aspect of, I think, that particular district. So I'd like to put that, insert that into that particular description. And I again, think we need to make that area, single family detached houses. And it, what, what's a smaller lot? I, I say all lots should be single family detached houses. That's what usually is in the RV one. So let's just keep it as what it is right now. So that's my opinion about that one.
Commissioner Blackwelder, you want to, you have comments on this?
Thank you, Chairman Brown. Yes, I would agree with everything Cindy just said and also point out that we agreed to that on October 27th as well, to remove primarily, to remove on the smaller lots. And then, you know, she added the other things tonight, but definitely to be very clear that those are single family homes in the RV one district and nothing else.
Okay, Commissioner Ruckey, you have any comments you'd like to have?
No, I, I, I agree that, that it's nebulous for RV one. And I think people could come up with a myriad of reasons as to why they wanted to put something other than single family homes in it. I think it needs to be very specific.
Okay. And Commissioner Brol.
Yes, I, I agree. I, I think the, with the removal of the pleasant and, and even safe, they're, they're subjective as well as the smaller lots. I think it's, the, the definition has to be more constrained than it is right now. It's too broad.
Okay, uh, so yeah, Commissioner Green Gold.
Actually, that was Lori. I think that was Lori talking.
It was.
So you meant Lori.
Okay. So another thing that we talked about on the 27th that wasn't quite as cut and dry as removing the primarily in the smaller lots. I wasn't, I went back and watched. I wasn't clear if we decided that we were adding the, and certain non-residential uses that are compatible with residential character like we have in the RV two zone. I, I couldn't really tell what the commission decided on that. If we were going to also allow any kind of professional or small scale commercial uses, if we were going to include that part in the district description and I am I'm just interested in what all of you decided.
All right. Well, what is your opinion on that issue?
My opinion on that issue is that because it is an RV one, well, I can see that it would be useful for that in the town center, but because RV one also encompasses some households across the street, I don't know that they particularly want commercial in there. And those neighborhood, more neighborhood areas by the waterfront. So that's why I'm deferring.
Chairman Brown.
Who's this?
Cindy.
Green Gold.
Thank you. I would be against it only because we've got, the, the RV one has been designated so because it's, they've got small areas of frontage. They have very little area to park in. A lot of them are little alleyways. So when you add one more use such as, let's just say a shoe repairman wants to go in there or something, to have any extra parking in there would be just not advisable in my opinion, because again, one extra car that isn't part of the household is just an annoyance to the, to the next door neighbor. So I, I think that that should stay in the RV two. That's what that designation is all about. And the RV one, because of the small lots and the, the lack of parking, really should stay with residential, single family detached house, the end.
Commissioner Ruckey, any thoughts?
I agree with Cindy and I say that because that was my recollection of what we intended to have happen there.
Okay, Commissioner Brol.
Yes, I, I agree. I think the, the residential, single family detached house should be it and, and then not, no further additions to that.
Now, Chris, I see you're scrolling through commercial uses, I guess, like it's currently in the RV section. Any thoughts you want to share?
Yeah, I am. At first, yeah, so some of those word choices are intentional. So when I get a chance to rewrite them, I think I will again, propose to something referencing, for instance, smaller lots, but it'd be clear that what we need to do is make it clear that despite the limited lot sizes that we have in the town and our code, we are allowing residential on smaller lots within this zone. So that's a kind of a purpose of these old non-conforming neighborhoods is to promote continued residential use. So the words, the words are inartful, but they're all sort of intentional. And the other part of it is that some of, to some extent, I tried to keep a, a light touch when I was modifying things. So a lot of the words were these old fashioned pleasant and safe neighborhoods. That's, that's drawn right from the current code, but now's the time to fix and modernize. And so I welcome that opportunity. Now, now on the, the table of permitted, permitted uses, this is the current list. And there are, for instance, here's the RV district. Let's, you know, there's only one RV district now. There are permitted uses and conditional uses. And when there is a conditional use, the condition for that use is set forth in the text of the zoning ordinance. I would go to churches, for instance. I don't think you're suggesting that churches should not be allowed in the residential village zone. Although that's what the commission has just said. So if, if that's the case, then we need to rethink that whole zone. And we, you know, certainly can, but generally speaking, when we write zoning codes, we do not prevent the practice of religion within residential areas. So that's, you know, we could place conditions on the use, but we're careful not to prevent that. And there's also things like home daycare, which customarily falls within residential areas and that creates a walkable community. Schools, for instance, nursing, you know, and, and not to mention some other things. Now, the question is whether something like this, professional school, studio for music and dance, if that should be removed from the RV one district. And maybe that's primarily where you're getting at when you're talking about, you know, uses. And I think, so we've got that to deal with, that question. But these sort of institutional uses routinely are allowed within residential districts and have always been in, in the town. So I need to hear from the commission if you're thinking of removing every use from the RV one district except for single family houses. And, or if you're thinking about keeping a more kind of like a RV two light district essentially, allowing institutional, compatible institutional uses in combination with single family detached.
I support keeping it simple like Cindy said.
I mean, yeah. I'm sorry, Chairman Brown. I, I, Chris has got a point that we don't want to be challenged by laws. So we have to allow like certain, we have to allow certain uses such as daycares. I do understand that that's, that is something we have to allow, but I think there should be conditions, of course. And if we have to come back and we have to rewrite what those conditions are, such as parking and traffic and all that and noise, then we'll have to do that. But we've got to make it as tidy as we can as far as, like you keep out professional schools, for-profit schools, you keep out things that you can legally in that district. So anything that we can't keep out legally, then that's a different issue.
Okay, then if, if chairman's okay, I can go through the proposed list of permitted uses. Or the amended table for the planning commission's review of the permitted uses by zone. And we can look at RV one and RV two side by side, which will provide a context. Because largely the RV two is what exists today in RV. So what we're saying is we're, we're evaluating how strict we want to be with respect to RV one moving forward. And so if that's helpful, I could take you through page by page, use by use, and we can kind of hammer this out. I don't know that we need to look into the specific conditions. Those conditions are, are already in the code. If you want to, I can go to the zoning code and for a particular item, for instance, you want to bring it up, we can look at it. But, uh, if you want, wanting to revisit all the conditions, we'll have to take that up at a, at a future meeting, the next meeting.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, let's, at the next meeting, we'll take a look at that and ask the commissioners if they would also if they would also look at it and consider what they want to say about these conditional uses so that we can hammer it out and finish it up at the next meeting. Does that sound reasonable? Everybody get a chance to digest what we're talking about before the meeting, so we aren't spending a lot of time talking.
Yep, makes sense to me.
Okay. All right, Chris?
Okay, so we're gonna, then we're gonna move on to the, the commercial zones then, and their, their statements of purpose. Let's get to that. Okay.
Now, let me ask two questions. Everybody took a look at the RV2 and is happy with the language there before we go any further. Can you scroll up?
Yep.
And let everybody read it and just make sure we're happy with the language as it's written.
There we go.
Chris, is there any way to tighten up housing types and densities without having to have major blocks of multifamily construction? I mean, is it possible? I mean, I think it is possible for people to buy up entire blocks and make it all multifamily housing, and, you know, maybe that's okay, but I'm not sure I'm okay. I'm not sure many people there are okay with that idea. Is there any way to keep that from happening?
Well, we can say, we can say that something to the effect that the intent of this district is not to transform it into something it's not. It's to allow for the continuation of a variety of housing types as, you know, in the same scale and character that exists today. I mean, nothing the planning commission has written in draft plan says that these, says, expresses that fear, you know, kind of confirms that fear. Everything that the plan reads about is sort of saying, we don't want that to happen, but we do recognize that having a duplex or an accessory apartment or a little senior facility or targeted areas where there's open space to do it, a cluster of townhouses or something like that. So having language in here that kind of speaks to the, what's, the primary intent is to protect and keep this as a intact residential neighborhood that, like it exists today while providing a variety of, providing for housing types and densities that are compatible with that residential character. If you want to make it clear, you can say compatible with the single-family residential character, you know, because.
Or the current, how about the current, single-family residential character? Maybe with the, because you keep saying the current residential character. Well, we don't have current in there. We have what could be down the road when we raise a few blocks and, you know, make it all change. So maybe you want to put in there current residential.
The last phrase.
Or surrounding.
The last phrase says existing pattern of building streets and blocks. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think that's what I'm referring to. And does that cover it?
Instead of buildings, can we just, I know it sounds really silly, but could we make it housing instead of buildings? I feel like buildings makes it more institutional. Could we just say the existing pattern of housing, streets and blocks? Does that make it, is, am I being too trivial here? Or, I mean, maybe I am, maybe I'm being too trivial on that one.
I don't know if trivial is the right term, but maybe too limiting, because there are uses that are allowed in the RV2 that are not just sing, that they're not just housing. And while there are not many non-residential uses there, there are a few, and they're permitted.
So what will, what will keep this resident? I'm just worried about it taking away some of the residential down the road if we keep putting garages and, you know, just different types of buildings that aren't residential.
Well, remember, there's a list.
I think I'm being too picky here, maybe.
Yeah, this is just a, this is sort of introduction to the codes discussion of the RV2 district. That's how it's best to understand it. And then there's the permitted uses, and then there are specific standards for lot size, dimension, and density, all of that. And together, they all shape what's possible.
Okay, all right, thank you, Chris, thank you.
Um, Chris?
Chairman Brown?
Yeah, one, one question. Commissioner Green Gold, what words did you want to see changed in that before we move on?
You know, I think Chris explained his point, and I, I don't, I mean, pleasant again is kind of a subjective word, and I wouldn't mind seeing that go. And, you know, I would always want to see this small-town community idea being brought into these RVs. So if he could, if he does any rewriting, I would like to see some of those terms come in and make the pleasant, the subjective words go out. So that's really my only comment at this point. So other than that, I'm good. Chairman Brown, thank you.
What a phrase such as enhances or promotes small-town charm befitting the small-town charm of the neighborhood, the, is that something that can be added to the district description?
You know, I'd like to say that, yes, but I'm a little leery about the use of the small-town charm unless we have it defined somewhere. That's why I like to say it can, compatible and consistent with what exists there now, because that's something objective. It means I can look at these two houses next door and say, look at them, they're cottages, they have a dormer, there's a door, there's a front walkway leading right up to the front, there's garden space in the front. And look what you're proposing, a box structure that's flat from up to 35 feet with no articulation at all. Now, you know, I could say, no, go back and submit another plan, because ultimately, the purpose of the statement is to protect the existing character. And I, and I don't have to get into the argument with the developer saying, North Beach is a small town, and they've allowed these types of buildings, you know? So the key is really to link it to the things that you want to protect specifically to the extent we can. And that's why existing character or compatibility, or so it does conflict with existing or encourages the protection of, those are the operable terms.
So when you say that, Chris, I looked at the top one, and it, this phrase that says, "on the smaller lots to help ensure that new residential uses are compatible and harm, new residential uses are compatible and harmonized well with existing single-family uses," that seems to imply a non-single-family use. So that definitely needs to be rephrased.
Yeah, yeah, it's clearly not the, it's like saying new houses, because, I mean, there's new, there are continually new houses being built in that neighborhood, even.
Right.
Now, so, yeah, so, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna revise that whole section to tighten it up and.
And make it single-family.
Yeah, and, yeah, and then use some of the scale and compatibility and use language that we used in item F here, the bottom part. But I like the compatible and harmonizing well. That really gives everybody, and, you know, sometimes this goes to the Board of Appeals, and they look at these statements and like, oh, well, we're not so sure we want to grant a variance, because that's not in harmony with the pattern that's been established along the street.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, Commissioner Brown, you're up.
It'll be easy.
Yeah, my only comment to Chris was that the RV1, as well as the RV2, that language should mirror, so if we be consistent between them both. So if we're removing pleasant from RV1, it should also be removed from pleasant in RV2. But I, I think we've addressed the, the small-town charm, certainly in RV2 with the existing pattern of building streets and blocks, because I think you're right, Chris. It's very tangible. It's clear what is there currently and how it appears. And so it isn't, it isn't up for, you know, speculation or, you know, it's obvious. So I just wanted to make that comment.
And Commissioner Ruckey, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I agree and understand where Chris is coming from. If, if, if we give somebody room to somebody, let's say Board of Appeals, if we're not making absolutely clear what we're talking about, harmonious is a great word, that kind of thing, then, then they're not going to be necessarily clear as to what we had in mind. So I, I, I think Chris's remark there is spot on.
Okay, then let's move on to the commercial. Chris?
Okay. So this list here under the term amendment two starts with items F and G. Those are the existing statements for the two commercial districts currently in the zone, the commercial district and the maritime district. They would be eliminated, and we have four more districts being created. And the first one would be the neighborhood commercial district, and it's intended to provide locations for small-scale and low-impact commercial uses that are designed and operated and operated in a manner compatible in scale and impact with nearby residential neighborhoods. And remember, this particular area is on the, you know, south side of town along Maryland 261, and then further north near the North Beach Volunteer Fire Company. However, just review all of them, and then we'll go back to see if there's proper distinction between them. Item H is the town commercial district, the town commercial district. And this district is intended to provide locations for commercial and other non-residential uses that are compatible in scale and impact with nearby residential neighborhoods. Again, that important connection. And protect and provide a safe and attractive environment for shopping, entertainment, and community gathering. The town commercial district is, is the, kind of the gateway into town, and the business is from the town hall to Gordon Stinnett. You know, the, got car wash and gas fuel station and Trader's Restaurant. That's all town commercial district. The town Plaza Commercial District is the Chesapeake Station Shopping Center and the commercial building right across the street from it on Harbor Road. The Plaza Commercial District is intended to sustain the town's primary location for larger format, locally-serving retail uses such as grocery stores and shopping center, where extensive parking can readily be accommodated. And then the maritime district is intended to promote a variety of land uses that are water-related and or benefit from location near the water, while at the same time encouraging gradual reemergence of natural systems found near the water and the protection of commercial and marine activities that become the town's waterfront heritage. And I have some ideas for fixing that particular wordiness based on the comments of one of the planning commissioners when we get to it. So there they are, the four specific commercial districts.
Okay, any comments?
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
Um, my only comment on the town commercial district, where it says, "is intended to provide locations for commercial and other non-residential uses that are compatible in scale and impact with a residential neighborhood." Um, I'm not, I'm not sure how a commercial building could be compatible with a residential neighborhood. I mean, will that be obvious?
Well, we have examples of that already, correct, Chris?
Yeah, I think we do, sure. You know, and not only that, we, the code does recommend, or the comprehensive plan does recommend doing a community character study and adopting design standards that would assure this, you know, statement would, could be implemented. You might remember, actually, I don't know if, if you were on the planning commission, Kathleen, back then, but we went through a variety of, like, building styles and shapes and, and commercial scales and things like that. And a number of them seemed to fit right with where the planning commission was feeling comfortable, and a number of them were clearly not something that the commission wanted to see. So really, just smaller-scale commercial structures.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I know in regards to the renovations and the additions to the school, it was, they seemed to spend a great deal of time making sure that the design of the school was compatible with the, with the waterfront environment that it was going to, that it was going to reflect that. So I just wanted to make sure, really, for a point of clarification for that. So thank you.
As an aside, I would think that we learned something of value there that every applicant that comes to the planning commission for approval could be asked to do the same thing. What is, how is your building consistent with the general character of our community? That's a fair question to ask an engineer or architect.
That's a great idea. That's excellent.
And we don't even need standards right now in place to ask that question. We can ask that question, and we can develop a lot of reasoning and logic and questioning related to it. But anyway, back to these four things, are any other comments before I talk about the maritime commercial?
Chairman Brown, Cindy, one more thing about the town commercial district. Did we not recommend that they be allowed to have residential use on top of the commercial? Wasn't that part of what we were talking about as far as the entry point to the town, that they could have, you know, a little apart, if they could stick within the 35 feet, which, again, I can give you a number of towns that do stick within the 35 feet and still have a little apartment on top. Did we not talk about the town commercial district is allowing a little apartment on top of the commercial district? Or am I thinking about another comprehensive plan? I don't remember, but refresh me, did not, we didn't talk about that?
You did, and, and you agreed that precisely that, that you could have an apartment in combination with a commercial use.
So I, you know, we would have to remove the non-residential use, we'd have to remove that verbiage out of there, out of H? If indeed we want to stick with that idea.
Well, you could. It's not meant to exclude that type of, you know, mix of use within a building. But if you wanted to make it more explicit that something you want to encourage, in other words, you're saying the intent, the intent is to allow that? Or is it that you would allow it as a byproduct of just promoting, you know, multiple types of housing in the town?
I know that we were discussing uses, the mixed-use area would be the TC Commercial District, the town commercial district would be the mixed-use. You know, we were always talking, well, there's going to be an area where there's mixed use. Well, this would be the one area that we would say could be compatible with a mixed-use area. Again.
In reason, right. And I want to just make it clear, if anybody's listening at home, that when we say, in the context of this plan, mixed use, we're not referring to mixing a residential and commercial. We're saying commercial with the allowance for residential apartments above. Of course, provided you meet the basic dimensional standards and other requirements, but, so it allows mixed uses, yes. And I think it can be pointed to, but it's not, as we generally say, understand mixed use to be, it's, but in any case, if you, if the intent is to promote, provide locations that, you know, encourage that type of use, then let's add that.
We said apartment with a no S. Like, we were talking about mom and pop, we weren't talking about apartments. Like, we, we were talking about mom and pop, we weren't talking about apartments. So I don't know if we need to put accessory residential use or, uh, but we were not talking about apartments.
That's complicated. That's a good point. Because there is the idea that that could absolutely be completely erased and you could have us a whole, whole area of, of apartments with commercial down below. Is that a problem for that area? It could be, it could be a little more intensely expected. But I'm bringing this up for conversation because I'm, I'm still thinking about it in my head here. Because it means that.
Yeah, without deviating too much from, from the, the question of how the things are phrased and the purpose statements, if we look at this revised table, you know, for, for your consideration, and I don't want to get too far ahead of us, I just want to get to one point. This shows the minimum lot size requirements, average minimum lot area per dwelling unit. Okay, so if you look at the commercial, the way it exists now, the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet and you can have a dwelling unit for every 3,600 square feet of space you have, of land area you have, okay? So I mean, obviously, if you added the smallest lot possible, you could have one apartment. Under, no, um, and then if you go to the town commercial zone, the new district, I just took those same standards and moved them over. So, uh, although I increased the minimum lot width to 50 feet, you know, I just don't understand this 20 feet, 25 feet. But, um, now it's 30, 3,600 square feet. For every 3,600 square feet, you could put an apartment above the business. But of course, you're capped at 35 feet. So presumably for the right sized lot, this would allow for more than one apartment. It would allow for, you know, could allow for a couple.
12 per acre is what that number allows. That's a lot of apartments.
It doesn't say a maximum.
What's that?
I mean, it doesn't say a maximum, not understanding the minimum. So you're talking minimum, but there's no maximum, right? So if somebody bought up all the properties along 260 and converted that to one big commercial slash apartment area. I mean, we've already had that idea presented, so I know this is a possibility. We could have multiple apartments and a huge commercial zone and it could add a lot of, um, you know, considering the parking situation was resolved, it could be a lot of intensity right there on 260. So I mean, I mean, I, you know, Lori's bringing up a good point that we have to be a little more precise in that if we're gonna designate these different commercial districts, we have to be precise, I think, a little more precise on what we expect in those areas to avoid a, a major intensity crisis or intense crisis, I should say.
I would say at a minimum for now, at least change it to the lot size, which is 5,000, and then we can address the rest and the conditions.
Uh-oh, I see Google, Google Earth coming.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that, I pushed the wrong button. I'm trying to find what the.
I don't know, where are we going now? Screens, so I have to have, three is not enough.
It's like, just bear with me a minute, I, I want to get to the code and look at that condition because we may have this matter wrapped up already, I'm not quite sure. Density, did, did, the, the, conditions. Okay. Dwelling unit in combination with commercial use. Adequate parking shall be provided for both uses. The commercial portion, uh, such combination use shall be fully utilized so as not to reduce the commercial services made available to the community. Commercial development shall be given priority in such combination uses and the residential portion must be ancillary. So while, while it's clearly secondary in nature, the residential unit, it is with the right size parcel, you could get 12 units per acre. Well, I, if you had an acre, you wouldn't get 12 units per acre exactly because you'd have to provide parking, you'd have to provide parking for the, the business and all that. But it's, it's likely that you'd have more than one or two apartments if you had an acre of land, uh, in combination with a commercial use, so.
How is that ancillary if it's 12 units? 12 apartments on an acre? That doesn't strike me as being ancillary, like.
Yeah, me either. Well, that's what the code is now, and the code now is for the commercial district to be a, a mixed use, essentially mixed use code, a mixed use district. If it's, if now's the time to make those adjustments.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, we could go back to the, the condition element of this and address this at the last, next meeting along with the other conditions you like.
Oh yeah, that's fine, well, let's just make sure we, we know what we're going to change or what's being proposed here, what, uh, what, what, what are we changing?
Minimum lot size.
So what do you want the minimum lot size to be?
I mean, that's, we can address it at the next meeting, minimum lot slot size and the conditions. A lot of places have, um, the residential as a percentage of the commercial. So we can revisit that, but definitely 3,600 is too high.
So you want to take 3,600, uh, as a percent of 5,000?
No, I would change the 3,600 at a minimum to 5,000, which is the minimum lot size for a, the minimum lot size period. But that still leaves you at eight per acre, but much better than 12. But it's still not what we discussed. We discussed a mom pop commercial with, and like, like the code says, an ancillary apartment.
Okay, well now, now we need to put, uh, numbers in because, uh, we've got to get past the generalities. What, what specific numbers are you recommending?
I recommend that we mirror the lot size. It's a minimal lot size, which I believe was 5,000 because it, we can't go above, we can't go above that, so.
We're talking minimums here.
In the table, instead of 3,600, we write 5,000, that's what I'm recommending right now.
So, so it's, it's, uh, one unit per 5,000 square feet of lot area?
I don't know, so Chris, that's not the density that I'm recommending. But I don't know that in a table you can, you can make the per square feet lot size a half of a resident if somebody has a 5,000 square foot lot, so.
No, of course, if you didn't have a 5,000 square foot lot, you wouldn't be able to do a, um, a residential unit. But, but, yeah, but you're, you were saying changing 3,600 to 5,000 square feet. And to explain that, that 3,600 is the number of square feet per dwelling unit. And so you're saying you would allow one dwelling unit per 5,000 square feet? And you wanted that density measure to equal the square, the minimum lot size, which is 5,000 for now, for the time being?
Right, so for the time being. But my, I guess my question to your professional expertise, Chris, is we don't really want eight apartments per acre. So how does, I mean, I imagine that that would need to be addressed in the conditions. I don't, I mean, we don't want apartments, that's the whole thing. We don't want apartments, we want to offer the opportunity, like we discussed, for the mom pop to have an accessory apartment or the ability to, um, cash flow their business with a residential use, but we're not trying to create apartment complexes over top of commercials is what I understood the discussion to be. But I think that I can offer, um, something more understandable next meeting because there is some additional code that we can borrow from Site Michaels that might help us with this.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I might interject, the other concern I have about the minimum lot size is we've got to consider parking. Uh, if you add apartment and let's just say, uh, the mom and pop turns out to be a family of six people, you're going to have extra cars. We have to understand that that area is so tight right now and such limited area for parking, we'd have to include the parking as part of that square footage. So I'm just wondering if there's enough room to actually allow for apartments in the, in the town, uh, commercial districts when I'm thinking of the area that we're talking about? Does that make any sense, Chris? Are we, are we forgetting about parking when it comes to all the different?
I think it's, I think it's a legitimate concern, but it's, it's provided for because, um, each use on the lot has to make sure that the parking is provided. So if, if the commercial is there, uh, and it requires 10 spots and there's not another spot on that lot for residential use, you can't have a residential use. There has to be space for the commercial parking and the residential parking. And the way the condition is now, it kind of mirrors that essentially and, uh, says that you, you can't just sort of finagle, uh, to, to get your residential parking on that lot. It's a commercial lot first and foremost. If you got extra space, you can do an apartment. So I, I, I don't know that we have to worry so much about that in terms of drafting the code right now. But the, the, the issue that I highlighted in, with the red font though, is one that speaks to development density and it may be ultimately better to have a, a cap on the number to specify up to certain number based on the square footage of the lot and actually make it a little more easier to understand, uh, for those people who own property as well. But, uh, but I'm not concerned about the, the, the parking because it, it has to be provided. You have to have two parking spaces for, for a residential unit in town.
So the apartment we can, would have a separate, um, parking condition. Okay, that's just what I want to make sure. I want to make sure that, I mean, fine, very good. So going back to H, then do we want to modify that definition or just leave it as it is? What do you think would be beneficial in this respect when we have to?
I thought the commission wanted to allow residential above commercial, but it was not out there waving the banner saying that's what the purpose of this, this district's for. So that's why I didn't mention it.
Perfect, okay, I'm good with that. I just don't want to look like we have, uh, something in one part of the, uh, comprehensive plan indicating that we would and then another part of the, you know, I didn't want to have mixed messages about that particular.
Right, and, and ancillary, and, how do you say that word? Ancillary? Ancillary, ancillary? Anyway.
Ancillary.
That.
Sorry, Lori.
Uh, I don't want to say it again.
Ancillary.
And that word, residential uses in the district description. Does that make sense? That way it highlights that it's allowed, but not as a primary type of use.
I could go with that. It would indicate that we're not thinking of it necessarily as, you know, come all with apartment and mixed use commercial. So that, that could probably, especially, yeah, it, it could probably work there.
Chris, what do you? Be clear so people don't waste their time.
I just want us to make sure, I just want to make sure we're consistent. I just want to be consistent. So whatever Chris thinks is the consistent way to be on this particular district, otherwise, uh, we might get it thrown out entirely. So Chris, uh, what do you think about that?
It's fine. I think it's fine, I, I like it and it, it, it's, it is what it is, let's put it in.
I think above, um, Trader's, there's already some kind of a business office or apartment up there, isn't there? I mean, I see something like that up there, I mean, I think we already have like that.
I thought that was a, an event place or, or rooftop bar. I didn't think it was an apartment. It was used that way years ago for a short while.
And at Trader's or at?
No, 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 at Trader's.
I didn't know that, hmm.
I mean, maybe somebody can, uh, correct me on that, but it was, it was not an apartment. It was something commercial having to do with their business.
It's possible, I, I don't know.
I think that one place has at least one, it looks like it, that, uh, liquor store.
Yes, and the liquor store, and the liquor store does have one for sure. The try, the peaking chicken, whatever it is, yeah. That's right.
Okay, Chris, what's up next?
Okay, the maritime commercial district. Cindy sent a, a question about that district and offering to, uh, reword it somewhat. And, um, and I, I thought it was a good idea and I, I didn't tell her that I would, but I'm bringing it to you tonight, I, I hope it's okay, Cindy.
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate that.
Also suggesting, okay, a six, uh, a, a basic amendment to it as well. But, um, she suggested, well, first of all, there is the wordiness of the existing one and that's pretty much how the current code reads, uh, so it's not really changed much. Here's the revised one that Cindy proposed. The MD district should promote a variety of non-residential recreational, uh, recreation and commercial uses, uh, that enhance the town's waterfront heritage, respects the sensitive nature of the surrounding environment and complements the small town feel of Chesapeake Beach. And I suggested keeping it that essentially the same, but say the MD district is intended to, rather than should, promote a variety of non-residential recreational, commercial uses that, you know, enhance the town's waterfront heritage, respects the sensitive natural surroundings and environment, and then, and are consistent in character and impact with the specific goals of this zone, which are listed in the land use element of the adopted comprehensive plan. So that's what I'm suggesting be add. And what, what I'm suggesting be deleted is complements the small town feel of Chesapeake Beach. Not because, um, I think there's anything wrong with that. It's just, it's difficult quantitatively to apply, to, to, to apply in a regulatory standpoint. So I thought, why not link this purpose statement directly to the bullet points that we listed for the maritime district? Because there couldn't be clearer and they speak to these sort of purposes. Uh, let me find that for you. Just a moment. Okay, here they are. I'm going to enlarge this a bit. This is the recommendation part of the chapter on land use, and this is the description of the maritime commercial. And the goals for this special area are promoting the diversity of maritime and water-related commercial uses and intensities that have long defined the town's historic waterfront, promoting active and vibrant commercial activities that street grade level where walking is safe and enjoyable, establishing public pedestrian access to and along the waterfronts and preserving the remaining scenic vistas to the bay and fishing creek. Anyway, so I'm just suggesting that it might be a, a nice place to draw direct connection between the comp plan and the purpose statement of the zone.
I agree.
Hey, Commissioner Broughton, any thoughts?
No, I, I agree. I think it's a good addition.
Commissioner Green Gold?
Yeah, I'm, I'm of course like what I wrote, but I'm good with taking out that. I'm fine with taking out this. As much as you all know, I want that small town feel. It is hard to quantify. I, I understand. So I agree with Chris. Let's go ahead. That's generous of you, Cindy. Yeah, I know. I mean, occasionally I can be, I can be that occasionally, but let's go ahead and add Chris's last statement there. I think it's great. Thank you, Chris.
Commissioner Blackwelder?
Um, I think it's fine too. The only thing that gives me pause is that, and it's already in the comp plan, the intensities. So we're going to have to up that open space so we don't have such intense buildings because I think if intensities is included in the district description, then we have the, the rod and reel as our, you know, as our comparable intensity and that's, that gives me pause. So does anybody have any ideas about how we avoid that problem?
Well, that's why I added respects the sensitive nature of this surrounding environment. I thought that would be one way to indicate that we wanted lower intensity. But we could put in there a less intense. Let me see here. Can we put something in there about a less intense recreate, non-residential recreation and commercial use? Can we put that in the beginning of, to promote a less intense, non-res, take out variety, just promote a less intense, non-residential recreation and commercial use. Can we put that in there? Or would we look longer to conflicted here?
Or we could, Chris, instead of adding that statement, we could copy the last three bullets. You already kind of talk about the other one without mentioning intensity. So that would hearken right back to the comprehensive plan if we did that.
Yeah, I, I think that would work because the first statement of this sentence does speak to the town's waterfront heritage and promoting a mix of uses. The only thing I don't see is the water-related commercial uses, which is something we would allow there, but not in other places. But anyway, I think that's a good idea. And if, I, I would suspect the rest of the commission would be okay with that since we're basically cut and pasting those three things.
Perfect.
Basic spirit of that first bullet is already written in there and then avoids this issue of intensities.
Thank you. That'll be, that's a good suggestion. Thank you, Chris.
Excellent.
Okay, if there are no more thoughts, you want to move on to the next?
Uh, yes. Okay. Okay, this is the, the statement for the resource conservation district. In order to bring it into better conformance with the guidance of the, the update of the conference plan. So everything that's bold is new. The strikeout is, is to eliminate. Everything else exists today in the current district description in the zoning coordinates. So the resource conservation district is intended to protect and maintain wetlands, surface water, steep slopes, forest, areas with elevated risk of flooding and other environmentally sensitive areas to provide locations for parkland, flood management, recreational activities and access to the water and bay and to provide, avoid intense development and the placement of residential uses in areas not suitable for such development and uses including, not, not suitable for such development and uses, including areas subject to increased risk of flooding.
Okay, who would like to comment first?
I would like to just ask one question. Am I, Chris, am I off base here if I add in a public safety issue to the, the flooding areas? So in other words, I know, you know, there's an environmental issue with a, you know, with all the wetlands, whatnot, but I'm also concerned about safety, you know? Is there any way we can add that to make it a more, because I'm, I'm going back to the, the conversation we had, I think it was with ABNERS and they wanted to extend, et cetera. And to me, there was a safety issue as well as, you know, not only for public, I mean, for commercial destruction, but I'm also thinking of personal safety issues. Is there any possible thought that we could add that to that to make more impact on why we want to have certain areas designated RC? Or do you think that's kind of lost in this?
No, I think that's relevant and, and more so in this district than any other one in the town because we do have flooding issues. We have land subsidence. We have steep slopes that with erosion. And so, yeah, this is, this is the place to put it in. And I, I think it fits.
Yeah, I, so I think we have to have either the words public safety, personal safety, something in there that indicates that it's, it's a health and, and safety issue as well for all this is why we designate these places RC.
But after the word bay, which is the one, two, three, four, fifth letter, line from the bottom.
Right.
Maybe, and access to the bay and to
Prevent.
Minimize hazard and minimize hazard and protect.
Public safety.
Safety.
Yes, something like that. Yes, exactly.
Okay, minimize hazard and protect public safety.
Yes, it sounds as though the council wants us to have reasons behind we, why we designate certain districts. And I just want to make sure that we're including some reasons why, you know?
Okay, Commissioner Broughton, any thoughts?
Well, I'm a little wary of the, the public safety moniker because I think that, that's what's kept everybody off of the, the beach and they've put up a lot of signage in the name of public safety, but I, I understand the, the interest in, in identifying that risk here.
Okay, Commissioner Blackwelder?
Um, so this is another one we've talked about a couple of times. And the first question I have is, are there any resource conservation areas that can take residential use right now?
In today's, under, under today's current zoning?
Our comprehensive plan right now of the lands that we designated a resource conservation, comprehensive plan as written. Are there any lands that can take residential use?
No, the recommendation is that there, that residential use not be allowed in this conservation areas.
Right. I get that we're recommending that it not be allowed, but the way we, are there any areas that have any residential development rights at all? Left.
Under the current zoning ordinance, yes, to some extent.
Okay, so what I would say is when we get to the table, we need to make residential use a C. Conditional. And then we need to add the phrase in the intent of the district to acquire or otherwise prevent from further development all parcels that were dedicated for open space, forest conservation, stormwater management or wildlife habitat as part of previously approved residential plan communities or communities built on annexed land through the town's growth allocation method. Wow. So I, I can send that to you, Chris. So you have the exact words, but if they're already protected, we do not need to unprotected. And I think that that statement will take care of that issue.
I'm not following the, the reasoning here, the rationale, but I still understand.
Well, Chris, it's, it's the intent of the district to protect already protected lands. So let's include it. We, it's, it's easy. You write a sentence and it's protected. That's all that needs to happen.
Chris, as I understand it, the resource conservation area that is currently exists, all of that would be in the new expanded resource conservation area that we're proposing.
Right.
So I'm, I'm not sure what Commissioner Blackwelder's point is.
My point is there are, the resource conservation doesn't actually preserve forest lands. If we rezone that residential plan community district and we don't say that we're going to preserve that parcel, we are rezoning it to meet resource conservation and it would, would take only one more step for somebody to pop a P into the land use table and voila, now that parcel is opened up for development again. And there's no reason not to put this, I, nobody can make a reason not to put the sentence in the district description. It's, there's no reason not to put it in.
But if it's resource conservation, you can't build commercial in that area.
It's not, this isn't about commercial. My sentence is to acquire or otherwise prevent from further development all parcels that were dedicated for open spaced forest conservation, stormwater management or wildlife habitats as part of previously approved residential plan communities or communities built on annexed land through the town's growth allocation method. That takes care of all of our forest conservation parcels. It takes care of our FIDS habitat. It takes care of the residue parcels in Chesapeake Village. All of these are getting broken out by this redrawing of our neighborhoods and I, that's not what we're saying we're doing to the community and that's not what was told to us during our planning. So just, we just need to add this sentence.
Yeah, Chairman Brown?
Commissioner Ruckey, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I understand what Lori is saying. I don't think there's anything wrong and probably a lot, there is a lot right to reiterate what is driving, in other words, reiterate the protection of those areas. I don't think we can be too clear. And I think that that's what the town residents are looking for. We don't have to have it in there perhaps, although I think we do. But it's making it absolutely precisely correct. People can't second guess what we're doing with that land.
Thank you, Jen. That's my point.
I, I want to thank you for repeating it a couple of times because it's, it's clearer now to me. And I, I think what you're basically saying is that these lands around the existing subdivisions that are now not zoned RC, but will become RC, we want to call them out and put them in the purpose statement of the districts to make it clear and, and to say that with respect to those, there's no development.
Absolutely.
We know.
Yes.
Make it clear. Okay, yeah, okay, fine. Okay, I, I, to be candid, I got thrown off on the discussion of growth allocation and annexation. I just didn't understand how that fit into the purpose statement. And I guess what you're saying is in the future, if growth allocation is used and some residual open space land is created in a subdivision, it ought to be designated resource conservation and protected?
No, what I'm saying is Chesapeake Village was annexed. And there, there are parcels. One of them's not called out. I think that I, I emailed you about that parcel. But that parcel is protected. It was used in a calculation for growth allocation.
Right.
So, and it's, it was used for the purpose of stormwater management and all that stuff.
Right. Okay.
You know, you know, the parcel that I care the most about, and that's the one I care the most about protecting, but my neighbors care about this other parcel too.
Yeah, and so let's put that language in and maybe you can send it to Sharon and me so we have the actual wording. I wasn't able to write it down, but we'll put it in. If there's no objection, majority of the commission.
No, I have no objection at all.
I think the.
Green Gold, any objection?
I, I just think the, we can't be specific enough on the RC conservation district. I just think that resource conservation district needs as much clarification as we can have. I don't see how we can go wrong. That's why I wanted to include any reasonings behind it. I just don't want anybody coming in and changing it for their own discretion. I want us to be specific, as specific as we can get. So I agree totally.
And Commissioner Broughton, any thoughts?
I agree. I think the being as clear and precise about what is acceptable in that, in that area. It, it affords protection, guarantees it now.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, well, the next, the next one brings us to the table of permitted uses and that's where we started. But I think, Mr. Chairman, you decided we would get back to that at the last, at the next meeting. If I recall right.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, okay. So that, that, that is, there's also, by the way, two other changes that were added to the comprehensive plan after August, after these. that were added to the comprehensive plan after August, after these text amendments were prepared. One is to eliminate from the Maritime Commercial District a land use called tourist homes. And it was, I believe, at the time, the intent was to make it clear that short-term rentals would not be allowed because residential is not allowed in that zone. But I'm going to just put flag that for everybody's consideration. The last one is a standard related to open space requirements for new development within the town. And remember, we added that right before adopting the plan, I believe, just a short while ago. So I don't have that particular standard drafted yet. But I, my intent is to have them for you at the next meeting.
Okay, all right. So that pretty much completes the list that's on the agenda for tonight. Does anyone have any, any commissioner have any further comments before we ask the public if they want to comment? Okay, hearing none. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on the proceedings tonight? All right, hearing none. Next, next meeting will pretty much repeat, for the most part, what we did tonight, go through the, again, with hopefully with the eye towards a finalizing or coming close to finalizing. And that should do it for the text amendments, proposed text amendments and the and the map. So we complete that early. So if you have any agenda items you would like to put on the next month's agenda, please forward them to me. Otherwise, it'll look pretty much the same as this month's agenda as we go through each of them again to confirm what what we've looked at and discussed tonight. Commissioner Blackwelder?
So I just want to be clear on what we're reviewing next time. We are reviewing the land use table plus the conditions. Is that correct?
The the land, we're reviewing the conditional use table and the chart that, Chris, we glanced at tonight. And the the language changes that were made tonight, pretty much going down the same list of items that we had for tonight's agenda.
Right, I guess, because tonight's agenda doesn't have any conditions. It doesn't have the conditions from the, you know, if we say we want something to be conditional, we don't have the conditions in front of us. So will we also have the conditions?
We did, we did talk about that tonight, and that will be on the agenda for next week. Yes.
That was my question.
Thank you. I, so if I can have a clarification. So everybody is going to be sending in to Chris the ideas about why they want a 35-foot height limit. And then we're going to also be reviewing or coming up with what we want for the zoning districts. Did we clarify the town commercial district definition, Chris? Or what did we end up figuring out on that town commercial district? Did we make any changes or no?
Yeah, that the, an apartment would be accessory or ancillary. Otherwise, the the purpose statement as drafted was fine.
Okay, all right, very good. And then we have the RV one to review. And the resource conservation. And the maritime. Everything we have to review it again.
That's an ancillary remark, Lori.
So as I said, we'll be going over the same things again next meeting.
Okay, there we go.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes, you do. Jan Ruckey moves that we adjourn.
I'll second, I'll second, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As have it. Thank you. Good night. We'll see you.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks a lot.
Good meeting.
You too. Good meeting.
Good night.